Call the meeting to order, this meeting of June 1st, 2020. Andy, could we have a roll call, please?
Council membershippers?
Here.
Ellen Bass?
Present.
Engels?
Here.
King?
Here.
Mayor Filkins?
Here. At this time, we would need a motion to approve the agenda. Is the agenda being amended this evening?
Yes, mayor, it is.
Okay.
And I apologize, my system froze. It's now reading, in the process of rebooting, and I'm about to open up the request for the amendment as we speak.
Okay.
So the, um, the request for the amendment this evening is in regard to the Cadillac Michigan March for Criminal Justice Reform, and the request is to place it under the City Manager's Report as Item C.
Okay, thank you, Marcus. Would someone like to make that motion?
This council member, shippers, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended to add the Cadillac Michigan March for Criminal Justice Reform under the City Manager's Report.
Ellen Bass, here, I'll second it.
Councilmember Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. This time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you are going to speak, that you state your name, and that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Not hearing anyone, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our special meeting that was held on May 28th, 2020.
This is councilmember Engels. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Shippers supports?
Councilmember Engels?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Marcus, if you would take us into the City Manager's Report, please?
Okay, uh, thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. Uh, the first item under the City Manager's Report is a request to award uh, the contract for Chestnut Street improvements. This would be from Linden Street to Colfax Street. Uh, as the packet indicates, we did receive uh, five competitive bids. The recommendation this evening uh, is for us to use Salisbury Excavating Ink out of Tustin, Michigan, the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, that came in at $505,290.26. Uh, it is customary for us to also add at this time a 10% contingency uh, for city engineer approved fuel changes that could happen uh, due to unit quantity issues as scope may fluctuate. Uh, and therefore, the recommendation this evening is to award it uh, two Salisbury Excavating Ink in an amount of $555,820.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, would someone care to make a motion?
Ellen Bass here, I'll make a motion to award the contract for the Chestnut Street Improvements Project to Salisbury Excavating Ink for the amount for the bid amount of $505,290.26 and approve a 10% contingent contingency for city engineer approved fuel changes in unit quantity or scope due to unknowns in underground municipal construction, bringing the total award amount to $555,820.
This is councilmember Engels, I support.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Ellen Bass?
Yes.
Engels?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and members of this city council. Uh, next up is the sort of traditional, or now traditional, COVID-19 update. Uh, it's been an exciting day today. Uh, there's been a new executive order issued, uh, from Governor Whitmer. I want to say it's Executive Order 110 uh, that, uh, puts in place significantly, uh, uh, sort of less restrictions than were in place, uh, as of yesterday. Um, at this time, I have not had the chance to fully, um, analyze how this will change things in Cadillac, but can say, uh, that, uh, operationally speaking, um, given that pools and whatnot will be now allowed to open June 8th, we'll certainly be looking at activating our plazas, especially the splash pad, uh, June 8th, uh, in accordance with that order as well. Uh, it also looks at, um, allowing for larger, uh, uh, outdoor public gatherings and groups now of over a hundred, uh, of up to a hundred versus before it was 10. Don't know yet if there's any additional special, um, uh, sort of loosening of the belt or restrictions in terms of the region that we're in. I don't believe that there are, at least in Executive Order 110, but it's, uh, my limited understanding, there may be, uh, uh, something yet released later this week that might further reduce some of, uh, some of the regulations governing uh, how our area, uh, needs to be under the pandemic. Uh, that being said, the latest update from our District Health Department trend uh, does indicate that for the entire district, uh, there are currently 371, uh, positive COVID cases. Uh, of that number, 15 people have, uh, unfortunately, lost their lives. Uh, total deaths within Wexford County currently are, are three. Uh, additionally, uh, 158 people, uh, within our jurisdiction, within that, that entire district area, have also recovered at this point, of which 57 of them are from Wexford County. Uh, so, you know, the, the stats appear to be pretty, uh, pretty stable. You know, as we, as we talk about the pandemic and how it's affected everybody, uh, as well as us operationally, we'll need to still look at when we're going to be reopening to the public, the, the target date, you know, as they awoke this morning, was going to be, uh, Monday, June 15th. That might change now, it might be earlier, based upon what, what these new orders state. But, uh, in any event, certainly, this has had an impact on all of us, uh, and has also had an impact on our, our summer, on our summer festival season. Um, you know, the, the Cadillac, and I'm, and I'm not gonna get the names right necessarily, but the, you know, the art show, the car show, uh, those are two of the largest events that we have in our community, both of which have been severely impacted by this event. The, the, the car show is canceled outright. You know, the art show, uh, is, is also gonna be completely different this year than what it's been in the past. The Freedom Festival that, that everyone looks forward to every year, you know, was just written up in the newspaper over the weekend about how they're still out there looking at, trying to get the event together, uh, for this, uh, this July 4th, this Independence Day holiday coming up. And, you know, who knows, if, if the governor's, um, restrictions should, uh, should allow it, then, then maybe it's gonna be a possibility. Uh, you know, as of right now, as I mentioned, you know, the order only allows for gatherings of up to 100, so that would be difficult to, to see how a, a, a full, you know, citywide festival like that could be, could be permitted. But, you know, we're all hoping that things are gonna change, and are gonna change quickly, uh, so that perhaps those types of events can, can still happen in a, in a timely manner yet this year. As an aside, we have not yet received any, any formal request or documentation either regarding, uh, the Freedom Festival. We know that there are people talking about trying to have it, and, and that's, that's great, but nothing's yet come forward. And of course, the, the lockdown, in, in the sense, uh, through the state is, is still prohibiting groups of greater than 100 to gather for those types of purposes. Um, that moving, uh, that said, we do have, I believe, a special guest with us this evening, uh, Dr. Joe Santangelo from, uh, Munson Hospital Cadillac, uh, to provide us with, uh, with an update on, on his end and some tips. Uh, doctor, if you're here, can you, uh, address us at this point?
Yes, thanks very much for having me, I really appreciate the opportunity to comment. Um, uh, thanks, Marcus, as, uh, for the summary and without, uh, with throughout the Munson Healthcare Region, um, we're seeing very similar numbers to what Marcus has described. Uh, we're seeing a relatively low number of cases now. Um, as far as people who are sick enough to be in the hospital, that number is very low. Uh, throughout the entire Munson Healthcare System, there were only two patients in the hospital with COVID-19, uh, as of, uh, this morning, one of which was in Cadillac, the other in Traverse City. Um, so we're seeing a, a very low level of COVID-19 where people are sick enough to be in the hospital. We're also seeing a relatively low number of cases, uh, new cases as outpatients, although, um, as many of you know, our testing capabilities aren't where we would like them to be. They're much better than they have been, uh, throughout the crisis up to this point, but they're not as good as we'd like them to be. So it would be great if we could test everyone in Cadillac and get a real feel for how much, um, COVID-19 there is that's causing either no or very little symptoms, so we could have a better feel. We're just not quite at that point for testing capability. One of the things that I think is gonna be particularly important, important moving forward, is we have not yet, we of course don't have a vaccine, we don't have effective treatments, and we don't have herd immunity yet. So the concept of herd immunity, I don't want to bore you, but uh, if enough people have had COVID-19 or are able to get a vaccine that makes them immune, then spreading and share, uh, getting together in large groups becomes much less dangerous for the spread of the virus. Um, but right now, we don't have that, and almost everyone in our area is still not immune to COVID-19. So, um, if a few people had, who had COVID-19 and there was a large gathering of people who were, who were close together and not social distancing, not wearing masks, then it could spread very quickly throughout, um, our area still. Um, coronaviruses do tend to be more active in the winter months. Um, so there is some hope that, um, we don't know about this, this new coronavirus because it's brand new. We haven't had a summer with this virus yet, it started last November. Um, but, uh, the hope is, uh, that we will see a little less activity through the summer. It's also very clear that for viruses like this, it's much harder to catch them outside than inside. That's partly just because the conditions are a little bit better inside for the virus to survive, and partly because, um, things get dispersed a little bit. There's a lot more air when you're sitting outside, it's not getting recirculated, so the chance of a viral particle landing on you is less. Um, so being outside is better than being inside. Having said that, um, this virus still could spread relatively quickly. So even as these restrictions, um, are relaxing, and as the governor is changing her executive orders, um, they're still recommending to governor, and every health official is still recommending that, um, you stay six feet away from those who you don't live with. If you're gonna be closer than that, that you wear a mask. Um, and the biggest thing to remember about those masks are not only are they protecting you, but most importantly, they're keeping your, um, respiratory droplets in. So if you cough or a sneeze, you're not spreading those droplets to other people. So it's, it's just as much or maybe even more about protecting those around you than it is protecting yourself. Um, and then still lots of hand washing. There have been some studies now that say it's a little harder than we thought to catch this virus from surfaces. So touching a surface where someone has sneezed or coughed and touched, um, and then touching your mouth or nose is still a way that you can get this virus, but it seems a little harder to get that way, which is good. Um, and really, the respiratory droplets, the coughing or sneezing close to someone where you don't cover your mouth is really the, the best way to get this, which is obviously what we want to avoid. So as we move into the summer, it's still gonna be the recommendation from health officials to, um, wash your hands a lot, most importantly, to try to continue social distancing and wearing face coverings like masks. Um, I'll pause there, but I'm happy to, to, uh, answer any questions that anyone might have.
You must, you must have done a really good job, Dr. Santangelo, because no one has questions.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to comment, I appreciate it.
Thank you, doc. Uh, okay, uh, mayor and, uh, members of the city council. Uh, moving, uh, forward to the item that we just added, uh, a request came in from, uh, Mr. David Mund of Cadillac, uh, regarding his, uh, planned Cadillac March for Criminal Justice Reform. Uh, this is an event, uh, that he is looking at doing, uh, this coming Saturday, June 6th, uh, 20, uh, 2020, uh, starting at 1:30 PM, uh, at the, uh, Performing Arts Pavilion here in downtown Cadillac. The, um, and I'm gonna read the, uh, uh, the purpose of the event, um, through the invite page that he has online. Uh, it says that this Saturday, June 6th, at the Cadillac Pavilion, at 1:30 PM, we will begin with speeches from members of the community, elected officials and public safety officers from Cadillac and the greater area. There will be testimonials, a brief moment of silence, and then a march through Cadillac that will ultimately end back at the pavilion. The overall goal for this march is to get commitments from our elected officials to change the conversation around public safety. We expect to receive statements from the Cadillac Police and City officials in response to the recent protests and riots across the country. Uh, this will be a peaceful protest. We will be standing for our brothers and sisters across this country whose voices need desperately to be heard. If we riot, the chaos will drown out the message. Bring a mask, bring a mask for your neighbor, comply with social distancing as best as you can. Bring a sign, bring your voice and invite your friends. Uh, the call, uh, to order, in a sense, is 1:30 with, with, uh, speeches and testimonials, followed by the march at 2, with then the entire activity essentially being, being over by 3. Uh, it says at 3:30, oh, any open dialogue or conversation thereafter, but, um, I can tell you that I met with, uh, Mr. Mund, uh, earlier today, uh, this afternoon, along with our Director of Public Safety, uh, about, uh, what the intentions are and about, about the purpose of the event. Uh, he's requested, uh, that, um, uh, that we, we collaborate, um, which, which I think is a, a, a good thing to do, having, you know, our, our city officials, those that are available to, to attend, uh, to, to come out and show support. Uh, the message is a good one. Uh, and at this point in time, I know that, uh, that myself and our Director of Public Safety are planning, uh, planning to, to be a part of, uh, the activity, uh, as well as perhaps a council member or two as well, uh, that I've connected with just very quickly this afternoon. This all, as I think everybody knows, just came about basically within the last couple of hours in terms of, of the whole planning piece of it. Uh, according to our city code, I want to say it's Section 26-3, uh, it does require for demonstrations, uh, and, and parades, even though this is something that, that he is indicating will all be on, on the sidewalk, uh, that the city council, uh, do authorize, do approve it, which is why it's before you this evening. Um, I'm not certain if there's anyone on council that, that might wanna chime in, uh, or if Mike Homier, if you have anything that you wanted to add to what I added, uh, but that is the, uh, that's the update, and that is the request. And I believe you have the documents that I sent out. And again, I apologize, they literally just came in the door, uh, about, at this point, probably about 40 minutes ago.
I'm not hearing any discussion, so, uh, we need a motion to approve the permit? Is that accurate, Marcus?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, we, we would, we would need a motion, uh, to promote, to approve the request for the, uh, demonstration, uh, which would also, and I also had him fill out a parade form, even though it's really technically not a parade, uh, just because it was the, the closest form that I could think of that would, that would be used. Uh, if, if it is approved by council, uh, it's the city's intention to, uh, work on tomorrow, uh, a media release, uh, for the purposes of, of getting the messaging out, uh, about what the nature of this is, as well as allowing, uh, you know, people, especially in our downtown, as much notice in advance as well, uh, of the, of the activity and, and, you know, the potential, uh, to have a lot of, uh, potential customers in that downtown area at the same time, so.
This is councilmember shippers. I know there are a lot of rumors flying around, this is so funny, this happened today, and already there's a bazillion rumors about things happening and what's, what's going on. I know that, um, what I know is that Mr. Mund plans to do this activity, and reached out to me, and I directed him to, um, talk to, uh, Marcus and Adam. I talked to Marcus and Adam first, and I steered him to shift it from being a protest against something to a protest to a, a, a rally and a march for something, so that, um, and to also make sure that we have the voices of our public safety and of our city officials as well, so that, um, most especially those people, so that they can, um, talk to, speak to about what we do here in our community. This is not, um, an issue that we have in our community of the kind of police brutality and violence that we have been seeing. And there are things that we do that are right. And there are things that we do that are right, like collaborating with one another and talking to one another. So, um, I just wanted to let you know that I'm not organizing this. Um, I'm just trying to steer it in a peaceful and, uh, collaborative direction. So those of you that have heard otherwise, it's, it's not true, anyway. But I'm in favor.
Marcus, this is Ellen Bass. Uh, where's Mr. Mund from, is he from Cadillac?
Yes, he's our current resident.
Okay, very good, thank you.
If there isn't any further discussion, would someone like to make a motion?
Um, I'm not sure, sorry, there's all kinds of kerfuffle outside of my house. This is councilmember shippers. I suppose I'll make a motion to approve the petition from Mr. Mund for the approval of the Michigan March, Cadillac Michigan March for Criminal Justice Reform.
I'll second that, Ellen Bass.
Councilmember shippers? Yes? Ellen Bass?
Here, yes.
Engels?
Yes.
King? King?
I let my mouse get away, yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for our second and final public comment this evening. Uh, the rules are the same as the first. If you want to speak, if you would please, uh, introduce yourself and keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Mayor, this is Bob Benson, Cadillac. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I have been watching as everybody else has the television news, and I've been disturbed by what's going on, and I, I totally approve of this rally. Uh, I'm afraid it's peaceful. But I do have some questions, and some of the questions is on the other side, it's proactivity. My son said, "Yeah, what are you gonna do about this?" It's like, "Oh dear, I'm just gonna sign a petition, and you're gonna be done with that." And it's like, so, my question is, I don't know, is there a way to kind of look at our hiring policies, our vetting of police officers, whether they talk about things like, uh, dealing with different races? Uh, what kind of oversight is there for police officers, uh, to examine behavior that might be, um, unequal, uh, and against minorities? Uh, I'm just kinda curious, I really, I, I really would love to just have done something proactively just to try and make sure that our house is in order, so that we don't have a foundation for, uh, a just cause in having rioting and stuff like that in our community, because we haven't been, uh, what you might say, due diligent in our responsibility to make sure that the people are, are heard and, uh, justice is rendered, and people are treated fairly. Is there, um, a way to look at policies and procedures? Uh, is that something that's open to the community? Um, just give me a little direction on that, if you could.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Benson. Uh, normally, we don't comment during public comment. Were, were those all of your comments?
Yeah, that's basically what I'm.
Okay, thank you. Not seeing or hearing anyone else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order. Does anyone have anything?
I do. Uh, Ellen Bass here, my wife and I went down to the parade, the senior parade, graduation parade yesterday. Uh, we had a blast, the seniors had fun. Congratulations to them and Cadillac High School for putting together a unique event, the best of situation. Uh, it'll be something they'll never forget. I think when my wife and I walked away, we looked at each other and said, "They had to do this every year." It, it was really a lot of fun. It was, uh, it was a good deal. I'm glad they had a good time, and congratulations to them all.
This is councilmember shippers. Um, I would like to, uh, thank Cadillac's first responders and all the folks who joined in, um, a parade to celebrate my retirement from 40 years of teaching. It was so wonderful to see our firemen and our police officers and Marcus and the mayor and, and lots of people to come out to, you know, after 40 years of, of teaching, to, and to just have it end in a pandemic where it just goes, you know, it was nice, it was wonderful to be honored in that way, and I think that's a wonderful thing that the city does for folks, so, thank you all so much.
Uh, this is, uh, Marcus, city manager, just a, a couple of quick comments. One, I wanted to take a moment just to clarify with respect to the Chestnut Street construction. Uh, if, uh, members of the council and the public may recall, it's a two-phase project. So the first phase that we are gonna be looking at, at doing right now, uh, this summer is gonna be simply Chestnut Street, Linden through Colfax as a part of Phase 1. Uh, Phase 2 will be, will be the other segment to it. Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention, uh, uh, in light of the comments that or questions that Mr. Best had, had raised, uh, regarding our police department. Uh, very proud of the department that we have. Uh, in fact, uh, we are, uh, going through a, a process of getting, uh, re-accredited as well. And so, you know, the, the comment, or at least the spirit around the comment, uh, about making sure we have a good foundation and our house is in order and whatnot, I would say that, um, it's, it's a constant process. It's something that's always, uh, evolving, uh, especially as we're going through, uh, a new accreditation process. And there are, unfortunately, far more departments that aren't accredited than there are, than there are departments that are. Uh, we, uh, used to be years ago, and we're, we're gonna be again, uh, relatively soon, uh, in a way of, of, of speaking about it. So, uh, great question, great thoughts, and, and very happy that under our, uh, leadership from our Director, uh, Public Safety, Adam Ojepka, we're gonna be, uh, an accredited department again, uh, sometime in our near future. So, those were the comments that I had, under the good of the order, thank you.
Okay, this is Mayor Filkins. I would like to echo, uh, councilmember Ellen Bass's, um, comments about the parade yesterday. Um, there couldn't have been more joy, I think, in the city of Cadillac than there was yesterday, uh, watching, uh, those young people parade with their families and those people on the side of the street who love them and are, and are so proud of them. Um, additionally, um, if you think about the creativity of that event, um, I, it leads me to think about something that I was reading in, um, on M-Live, actually, down in the Grand Rapids area. down in the Grand Rapids area. They are trying to figure out how to create what they're calling social spaces, so that local downtown businesses can be creative about how they can expand their service space to be able to serve more customers. And I spoke with Marcus about that, and he reached out to the Michigan Municipal League, and nothing has come through them yet for us to be able to say, okay, it's a go. And we know absolutely what this could look like. But what I wanted to do today was to encourage our downtown businesses to think about all of the really unique spaces that we have downtown in Cadillac, that they might want to think about, you know, having a pop-up dining experience for people. And I don't know exactly what that would look like, but I just want to encourage people to think about things creatively, and most importantly, to reach out to the city of Cadillac, because we want to be able to support that creativity, and we want to be able to support those restaurants downtown, and we'd love to talk to you. With that being said, I would like to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all very much.